Jake second.
Yeah, they keep six feet.
Yeah, so let me just move the table back and I'll say I hate being the team.
Right now I can't see very well, so. Taylor, you guys, is that your phone right there?
No, this is Wes's shit. I'm gonna break it, it's what's gonna happen.
Break stuff.
Welcome to Main Street. This is Backwoods Building. My understanding, there were, was a third apartment added quite a few years ago, but the correct paperwork was not completed. So that's what we need to do tonight. But I don't see Jimmy in the meeting, so. I guess we can wait a few more minutes, or let's do, let's flip it around, let's do Taylor Farm Road, can we do that?
Well, that public hearing starts at 5:30 though.
Oh, yes, true. Never mind. Because it, was it posted for 5:30 Bailey?
Yes.
Yeah, it wasn't. Carrie, I see that you're in here, do you, I'm guessing it's for the Main Street. Do you have any questions?
No, you just have my approval.
Okay, perfect.
You want me to hang up because can you go into private session if I'm not here to deal with what you need to deal with?
Well, there's nothing that we can deal with because we have to wait until 5:30 now to do Taylor Farm Road.
Oh, no.
So.
Honestly, I wasn't sure what it was pertaining to, so I just, where I got the notice in the mail, I wanted to check in and, and make sure I was up to speed on everything.
Yeah, it's already there, just the paperwork wasn't done properly.
Yeah, yeah, so I called Chris Farmer to see what it's about, and he told me what it was about, and he said he gives his approval as well.
Okay, perfect, wonderful.
You know, you've heard from the peanut gallery.
And you heard from the what? Oh. Thank you for calling in, Carrie.
You're welcome, I guess I can check out, huh?
All right, have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
So Stephanie, I see that you just got on there, the public hearing for Taylor Farm Road won't start until 5:30.
Rebecca?
What?
It actually, on the posting is, it does say directly to follow the first public hearing.
It does?
Yeah, it says on the posting, on the agenda, it just says 5:30.
Okay. Well, that worked, you guys ready to move forward?
Yes.
All right, so we close the public hearing for Backwoods at 2512 Main Street, and go into the public hearings for Taylor Farm Road. And.
West Taylor Farm Road, storage units?
The storage units. So.
Francesco get into the building yet?
I'm sorry?
Did Frank get into the building yet?
Yeah, he's sitting right here.
Okay. Wait.
He said he's alive, he's okay.
Okay.
So, since Carrie, do you have any questions about what's going on on Taylor Farm Road?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, how about the board? No questions?
No.
Doing storage units up there, right?
You're doing storage units?
Huh?
Storage units?
Four units.
Storage.
Storage units, yeah.
How many?
About, I propose for three buildings, and each building has 28 units per building.
So Brian, you were saying that you proposes three buildings and 28 units per building?
Yep, I did see that on the plans.
Um. So nobody has anything?
Really, it's in the commercial zone, right?
Yeah, it's in the commercial. He's the property before, I think two properties before work, it's industrial. It's commercial zone.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I don't have any.
All right, if nobody has anything, I'm gonna close the public hearing for Taylor Farm Road, and we will resume the regular scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM.
Actually, I did have one question. I attended my, my first airport commission meeting Monday, I believe, and one of the discussions there was, was that Larry Coob understood there were buildings going in pretty much adjacent to the airport, and he was curious about things like roofing materials and height and things of that nature, and if the FAA has anything to say about that.
So, so his question was, because of the location of the buildings, he was wondering in regards to the height of the roof?
And as well as the color of the roof, whether and how reflective it would be, depending upon which way the building is oriented, and if that would reflect light into pilot's eyes. So I didn't have an answer, I, I didn't realize how close this was to the airport, but it doesn't look like it's that close.
Yeah, it's, and it's on a downhill grade from the actual airport, so his question is the height of the roof, and like the color of the roof, is it gonna be reflective, is it gonna be tinted just because of the air, the planes going in and out?
Uh, there's a nail to it, for the roof, it's galvanized, and it's only to be put by, on the wall, so coofet will be another 10 feet, so 10 feet, it's top feet.
All right, so this, the roof is gonna be galvanized, and the height is gonna be, of the building and the roof is gonna be about 10 feet.
Okay.
So we are in the public hearing for Taylor Farm Road and storage units. There's no public to ask any questions, do you have any questions from you review?
No.
Done?
None.
All right. So Brian, do you have any other questions?
No, that was my only question.
All right, so we will close the Taylor Farm Road public hearing at 5:08. I'll see you guys at 6:00.
See you at 6:00.
Rebecca?
Yes?
So does that mean it's officially approved, or do we have to wait on something else?
Oh, no, you gotta wait till the regular meeting where we vote on it.
When is that?
Tonight, at 6:00.
Okay, so. I could just.
Yeah, you can leave and come back at 6:00.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, bye.
All right. Bye, thank you. How's it going?
Recording's back on.
Friend of mine just had a, their, mercy, was it, I'm just like, whatever, to hand her things up. Like, how are you feeling, she's like, like I've been shanked by a bunch of long spears that came in Thrones bows.
No, poor Tucker's gonna get his wrist broken tomorrow.
Ooh, a reset, ooh.
Yeah. Apparently, when they did the x-ray the first time around, they didn't catch, they didn't catch it, that it was actually fractured. Then he wiped out again.
Always have the gas on so far.
He hasn't.
Oh, he didn't, oh, well.
No. Goes in tomorrow morning, 6:45, and they're gonna chisel him up.
Good job.
That sounds awful.
I told him to live with it. I've got, I've got 10 times worse things, that's just a risk. I promise. Good baby.
Hi there, I'm hoping this is working.
It's working.
We hope you're not driving.
No, I'm just sitting in the parking lot. Yep.
All right, there's Brian. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open the regular scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM, we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands.
Which is.
One nation, under God. Liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
All right, so number two is declared in a forum, we have a forum, and is there any conflicts of interest? No? All right, adjustments to the agenda, did you hear there was an adjustment? Bailey? Bailey? Oh, she's frozen. All right, we'll go back to that. Um, I'd like to speak on a non-agenda item. Hearing none, let's go to reviewing and voting on meeting minutes from April 14th.
Make a motion except the minutes.
I'll second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Uh. Bailey, yeah, are you back with us?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay, adjustments to the agenda, you said you had an adjustment to the agenda?
Yes, so 2568 Main Street, there's a proposal for a three-unit apartment building. Keith and I spoke with him on the 20th, and I asked for a drainage plan, a framing plan, and Keith is looking for sewer plans as well.
Okay. Do you have a timeline for this before it comes to us, or?
Um, I'm hoping for the second meeting of May, or the first meeting of June, but it depends on when he can get these plans in.
Okay, perfect. Um, did you have any correspondence?
No.
All right, so, do you guys have any new business?
No.
All right, so we'll go to continuing business, conditional use amendment for 2512 Main Street. And we go to the conditional use permit. From Mr. Janassi. And you guys with the public hearing, nobody had any questions? Okay. So I made a motion that applicant has to standing present this application as owner. I made the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. I make a motion that planning board has the authority to consider this application by the use listed in section 38.4.6 in the downtown commercial district district, as determined by the code enforcement officer on March 22nd, 2021.
I second.
I made the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, so on to section three. Um, is proposed use of such character, character that the use will have significant adverse impact upon the value or quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than would normally occur from such a use in the zoning district? Um, so, A, uh, there's no effect, this, this unit's already there.
Right.
So.
They make a motion that it does not.
All right, Wes made a motion that it does not have considerable, considerable impact.
Second.
Wes motion, Jake second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number four, will municipal or other facilities serving proposed use be overburdened or will hazards be created because of inadequate facilities? Again, the, this has already been completed, so I make a motion that it will not be overburdened.
I would second that.
I made the motion, Brian second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, number five, I make a motion, not applicable.
Right down.
I make a motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I make a motion that we approve this conditional use permit as presented.
Wait, second up.
I made the motion, Brian second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done, we'll get it signed, um, and Bailey, we'll be able to have that printed tonight. We'll get it printed tonight, we'll sign it before we leave, and it'll be available for.
Thank you all very much.
All right, moving on. Conditional use permit for Taylor Farm Road. Presented by Frank Delwell. And for those of you that were not in the public hearing, what he is proposing is a three-unit, storage unit off Taylor Road. Um. Does anybody have any questions? Any further questions?
No.
No? Um. All right. So I make a motion that Mr. Delwell has the standing present this application as the purchaser. I made the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, and planning board has the authority to consider this application by the use listed in section 38.4.6 in the commercial district, as determined by the code enforcement officer on March 22nd, 2021.
Second.
I made the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, because this one's already there. Number three, we're looking at if the proposed use of such character that the use will be significant adverse impact upon the value or quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than would normally for such a use in the zoning district. Um, so how does the size of proposed use compare with surrounding uses, and what is its impact on a significant seat visitor? Does anybody have anything with that? We're all good?
Yep.
Brian?
No.
Okay, um. So the intensive proposed use, I don't see any, I mean, it's historic, and people aren't going in and out.
Right.
And if they do, it might be a squatter.
Never know.
You never know. Um, that's true. What is the potential generation of noise, dust, vibration, glare, litter, and other substances? There is no potential. Um, Frank described the roof. Galvanized at a height of around 10 feet, so there will be no effect on the neighboring airport. Um. And in regard to D and E, part of the application is the storage units will be surrounded by vegetation and trees on all four sides except for the driveway. So I make a motion that this will not have a significant impact on the value or quiet possession of surrounding areas.
A second.
I made a motion, Jake second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So will the municipal or other facilities serving the proposed use be overburdened or will hazards be created because of inadequate facilities? So this is not hooked up to sewer, you don't have to worry about parking. Again, traffic will be at a minimum. And the fire department might look at this, Bailey gave this thumbs up? Yes?
Yes.
Correct. So I make a motion that municipality or other facilities will not be overburdened or will, and will not have any hazards from this facility.
A second.
Any question, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Um, I make a motion that number five is not applicable.
Second.
So I make a motion, Jake second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we grant Mr. Delwell um, his conditional use permit to build the storage units.
Wait, second up.
I made the motion. Um, Brian second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're approved. So Bailey will get this printed, and then we'll sign it tonight, and it'll be available for you to pick up.
Rebecca? Rebecca?
Yes?
So it's all good? Uh, he could put a deposit down on materials tomorrow before the price of steel goes up again?
We will, we will be signing it tonight.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good night.
That's a legitimate question.
Exactly.
Aye. All right, so moving on to 322 Rumber Road, application put in by Jennifer and James McCormick. I was not present at this site visit, so Wes, would you like to do this one?
Uh, McCormick, we have, who's representing McCormick up there? Anybody?
I don't think we have anyone.
Bailey? Mark's in the waiting room.
Sorry, I don't have it pulled up.
Well, should we even go over it, but nobody representing though?
I can answer any questions, I think we covered it pretty well in our site visit. Um, but I can answer any questions that you guys may have unless I don't know.
Can we get a, uh, that's so close to the water, did we get a septic inspection on that yet?
I didn't, I don't have one, no.
All right, I'll go over this one, standing. The applicant has, I make a motion that the applicant has standing presented this application as the owner.
So Wes made the motion. I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, good. Authority, the planning board has authority to consider this request for expansion, reconstruction, and/or replacement of structures, town code section. All those. Code enforcement officer has made a determination on December 23rd, 2020, the applicant's proposed building permit is within the 100 feet of the normal high water line of the water body, Ransay Lake, and so the application has been referred to planning board. So I, I make a motion, the board has.
So.
Wait, second that motion.
Wes made the motion, I can't talk, Brian second. Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Number two, let's see here. The planning board, in determining whether a practical alternative exists based on the sections, shall consider the lot size, shape, and slope of the land, the location of other structures on property, and adjacent properties, the location of the septic, existing architectural plan, the potential of soil erosion, other on-site soil suitable septic systems, and the type of vegetation to be, to accomplish relocation, so. Okay, you're gonna come back 10 feet, right?
Yep.
And.
They were gonna use the existing septic, was that correct?
They were, uh, which I would like to have a septic system inspection done by somebody who's qualified, since it's so close to the lake.
Makes sense.
I'm looking over the, the application, and I don't see when that septic was installed.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think that they could find any record of the, of the original septic system.
Right.
Is why we don't have a copy of that.
Right, so I, I mean, I strongly feel that you know, somebody should at least look at that before we give them permission to build a new house on it.
So you wanna make that a condition?
I, yeah, I would like, I mean, that's my personal thing, I would like.
Do we wanna, just, I'll put this as a condition as we go through the fines and facts sheet, do we wanna put a condition on qualified inspection of septic system before construction to start?
Right, and if it needs, if it needs to be upgraded, it, it, that has to be put to the plan.
Yeah.
Uh, and that is probably the only thing that I. And that is probably the only thing that I have. I don't know if anybody else has anything.
I don't know if I would say that it would have to be completed. I think if there's some significant changes that in this inspection, that issue goes back to the planning board.
Yeah, I don't know. If the septic doesn't check out.
If the septic doesn't check out.
Right.
So for the condition, in the, in the case of any issues arising from the inspection, it should return to planning board?
Yeah.
Alright, that'll work.
Yeah.
Let's see, shape of the, pulling it back and they can't really pull it back any further because they're running the driveways and other things.
Driveways and wells.
So they're pulling it back kind of as far as they can. Yeah, other than that, I don't know, does anybody else have anything? Someone? Alright.
Let me make a motion, sign this condition over it, yeah?
Yeah.
The condition will be part of the final, final motion.
Okay, perfect. I make a motion that no alternative, practical, nothing else can be done. This is the only option. I made the motion, Wes second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So number four, due to the nature and size of the exchange in the planning board, rest, written notice. Do we wanna, does the planning board wanna have written notice, letters go to the butters or?
I don't think there was anybody right on top.
I feel like that was a fairly large block.
It was a large lot and the other places that you see on the map are actually theirs.
Right.
When you look at those, the existing lot, it's the one they're tearing down, shed, were all in that little compound.
Right, this lot right here?
Yep.
So
Yep.
So I'm gonna make a motion that the planning board does not request written notice to the butters.
A second.
Wes made motion, Jake second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I literally have the condition.
Okay.
So I make a motion that based on the findings in this worksheet and the following condition, that they get a qualified inspector to come and inspect the septic system. And if no issues, they could start building, but if any issues arise from inspection, they should be referred back to the planning board.
Are you on number five or number six?
Number five.
Okay.
I second that.
So I made a motion. Wes second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I suppose you probably sent your theory where take twenty-six too.
Alright, I make a motion that we approve the building permit application for Jennifer and James McCormick.
With noted conditions.
With the noted conditions.
Wait a second up.
I made a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright. Alright, next is four man voting permit application for Ellen Albrecht for two fifty-six Brumford Road.
Yeah.
Was everybody excited for that meeting or was it you and I?
Just you and I.
He's not present.
Yeah, that's the one that has the septic across the road and up the hill that they'll be installing. And that they current, currently use the well that's on the other side too, so.
I know when we were there, I think we had asked of the piping underneath, we asked him to look to see if the piping was underneath the septic.
He didn't think that he had it.
Oh, that's right.
And that he was gonna have to dig up seventeen, then somebody said there is a, maybe Ellen or somebody said there wasn't.
Yeah.
It runs across the street, so that's they put in a new septic, they pump it across the street, whatever they do, it's, I guess it's up to them and state, whatever, you know?
Yeah, yeah, they, they have a design, I think, from Beth Abbott, I think.
Right.
Yeah. And, and we did, since the site meeting, we did a submit the butters' letters.
Bailey, Bailey, does that be an email, correct?
Yeah.
They're in your package.
The butters know about it.
Oh, right there.
Yeah. And we're trying to move it back to the twenty-five foot line and taking the stairs off with, so when you look at that version one plot plan, it does considerably move the deck and the side of the building back as much as we could.
Yeah, there's not much room where it was.
Right. It goes into the road.
It goes into the road, it's gonna be right there, so there isn't any other options for this.
No.
So, does anybody have any questions? So, starting on the application, I make a motion that the applicant has standing present this application as the agent. This motion, I mean, the motion, Wes second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I make a motion, the planning board has authority to consider this request for expansion and reconstruction as determined by the code enforcement officer on December twenty-third, twenty twenty. The applicant's proposed building permit is with a hundred foot of the normal high water line of the water body range late, so, and so the application has been referred to the planning board. Make the motion, Wes second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number three. So the planning board in determining whether a practical alternative exists based on a paper mentioned section, so we consider the size of the lot, slope of the land, location of other structures on a property and on adjacent properties, location of septic tanks, architectural plans, solar erosion, and on-site soils suitable for septic and vegetation that might be removed. On the site visit, the size of the lot only allows them to move back. What was, was it ten feet, Ellen? I'm sorry.
Uh, no, right now, well, the porch is at twenty-two and we're gonna move the, that porch back to twenty-five feet, but we're also removing the steps that come within about eighteen feet of the water.
Okay. And we already discussed the septic system will be placed across the street. I don't think there is any issues with soil erosion and there's no vegetation being removed to
Right.
make this happen, so we don't, we don't have to worry about replacing any vegetation.
So I make a motion that there is not a practical alternative.
Wes made a motion?
Second.
Jake, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So due to the nature of the size expansion, the planning board requested that written notice be mailed to the director butters of the property as part of the consideration for significant adverse impact upon value right of quiet possession of surrounding properties. That is my motion. Motion, Wes second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bailey? Can you just make sure that request is changed to requested since it's already been concluded? Thank you. Go ahead.
We don't have any conditions we wanna throw on this, right?
No, there's not a condition.
I make a motion that the planning board the planning, so I make a motion, the planning board concludes that the proposed project is eligible for thirty percent expansion. Any condition?
Second.
Wes made the motion, Jake second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the application for two fifty-six Brumford Road presented by Ellen Albrecht, without conditions.
Wait a second.
Make the motion, Brian second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye.
It's approved.
Alright, thank you very much. And unlike Frank, we won't be breaking ground tomorrow, so we'll be back in touch with Bailey to about her.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Billy, would you like me to come in tomorrow morning for my signatures?
That'd be great.
Okay, I can, somewhere around ten, ten-thirty?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Moving on, chapter thirty-eight zoning ordinances, legal review. We need to schedule a workshop. And
What's this for? Zoning ordinances.
Okay, so that's for chapter thirty-eight. At our last meeting, we didn't have the
Rebecca, I accidentally hit mute on you. Can you unmute it? Sorry. So
All they do is if the board is selecting, they just tell us we have no authority over any ordinances?
Actually, they didn't say we don't have authority of chapter thirty-eight, because we do, yeah, the code says that. They are planning on, from my understanding, putting this on the special timing they're possibly having.
What do you want on?
Chapter thirty-eight.
Everything that we've been over.
From my understanding. So this is a review, go over what the attorney said. You said schedule a public hearing, we are just gonna schedule another public hearing?
Yeah, so for this, my suggestion is that we do a workshop at five to six and then have a, a public hearing at six with the meeting directly to follow to motion to approve any, anything that we go over in the workshop. I'm just trying to get this through because, so that I can meet the timeline if we have a special meeting in July.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
She has May twelfth, I can't see the calendar.
Yes, it's May twelfth.
Yeah, I agree with that. I make a motion that we do schedule workshop and public hearing, workshop at five, public hearing at six on May twelfth.
Wait a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 So our next meeting is May twelfth at six P M. Actually.
Five P M.
Five P M. So Bailey, when you do the agenda, because we have the public hearing scheduled at six, do it, or when we post it, make sure that the regular scheduled meeting is immediately after the public hearing.
I will.
Alright. Does anybody have anything else? I need a motion to adjourn.
Wait a second up.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you guys, thank you Brian, see you tomorrow morning.
See you in the morning.